The November 20th, 2018 regular meeting of the Menner Exempt Village Board of Education Meeting is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Ms. Jessling, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Buckley?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
And Mrs. Jessling is here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 20th, 2018 Regular Board of Education Meeting for the Menner Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on spectrum cable, Channel 1026 in Menner, and Channel 1025 in Menner-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Menner, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you. And just want to make note that we have appointed treasurer pro tempore, Ms. Jessling, and Mr. Wilson's absence for tonight's meeting. And next, we will have approval of a minutes. We have October 9th regular board meeting and October 25th special board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jessling, yes.
And next, we'll have hearing of the public on agenda items only. Saying that, we'll move on to superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A4. So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jessling, yes.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Lynch to the podium for a presentation on our learning spaces.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Porter, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our district's emphasis on learning spaces and the impact they can have on both teacher instruction and student learning. Mentor schools, adapting, balancing. I love technology. That was my double click. Mentor schools, let's start that over again. Adapting, balancing, and collaborating. These three words are essential to what we want to accomplish as a district. Tonight's presentation on space will focus on all three of these big ideas. How are we adapting as a district to meet the needs of our students and teachers around space? What is the right instructional balance in the classrooms? And how can we achieve that balance using technology, instructional practice, and space? And how can space help us collaborate amongst each other as professionals, but also, how can it help our students learn the keys to effective collaboration? Over the past five years, our district has made learning spaces an important part of our discussion and planning. This is specifically defined in our strategic plan under our vision statement. Together, we will provide a balanced, high-quality education. The goal is to engage students in a comprehensive curriculum that is relevant and responsive to their evolving needs with a strategy of maintaining and further developing instructional practices, space, and technology in a balanced environment. We have made this move for a number of reasons. First, our traditional learning spaces were not supporting the shifts of instruction we were making with our teachers and our students. Next, as we started to shift our classroom furniture, we started to see higher levels of engagement on the part of our students. Another reason for this change is feedback from our business partners, such as our Business Advisory Council, Mentor Chamber, Mentor Rotary, and our work together through the strategic planning process. In both formal and informal settings, they have told us, we need to have students coming out of high school who can effectively collaborate, communicate, and be participating members of teams in their companies. Some of you may have remembered this space in being the hub. We have planned all of our spaces around four key ideas, and I'll show you what this has transitioned to, but these four IKEA's ideas are important as we go through and look at all of our spaces. The first one is flexible. We wanted all of our spaces to be flexible so that we can accommodate our current as well as future instructional practices. We want our spaces to be supportive so that we can help develop the potential of all of our learners. We want our spaces to be creative so that we can inspire the teachers and the students who use this space every day. And we wanted our spaces to be mindful, mindful in how they support the four Cs, which are collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and communication. So let's start by looking at this first space of the hub, or the old media center. Some of you may remember that this is what it used to look like. Space was divided up intentionally to give students privacy, and the expectation was you came into this space, into the student center, to sit quietly and study. Now, as we transition, we see this space, which is the new hub of today, and you can see a drastic change where we promote students sitting together, studying together, and helping each other out. Let me make one switch there. Next, let's take a look at the lecture halls of old. The lecture halls of old had students spaced apart, oftentimes head down with no opportunity to talk to one another. We have transformed these into our digital learning labs, which have replaced the lecture halls and provided the opportunity for students to work collaboratively or individually if needed. Let's take a look at our old high school classrooms. You walked through Menner High School four or five years ago, 90% of our classrooms were set up this very way, in five rows, five, six seats in those rows. They were set up so that the desks were facing the front, and they were not to support anything other than, a lot of times, teacher-directed instruction. Now, our classrooms have transitioned, and they have been modified to support presentations, discussions, project work, and information gathering and sharing. The key is that each of these classrooms has the flexibility to support any one of these practices. Let's take a look at our student center. This is the student center of old, and we have transformed that student center into a more welcoming, warm space that encourages students to sit with one another, share their knowledge, and help each other learn, or just have opportunities to sit and be collaborative or creative with each other. One thing, as I scroll to this space, and this is kind of hard to see, so I'm going to go up here, but if you look, these are the tables of old that we used to have. We had to maintain this because we still have activities that go on where these tables, at the end of the day, need to pop up, and we have cheerleaders in there at the end of the day. So we needed to have some sort of flexibility. But this is no different than most of our days. This was one day last week during Mod 5-6, and we had about 100 students in the space. There were about 99 students in the newly designed space, and one girl who thought, I just needed to have my space by myself. Our students are giving us feedback every day of what they prefer, which spaces they want to be in. Next, let's take a look at this space. We rely on our teachers to share lessons with one another, problem-solve together, and inspire each other. With this type of space that you're looking at, a former math office, it was nearly impossible to do this. You can imagine now how the renovated space, office space, provides more opportunities for our teachers to work together. Our emphasis on space began five years ago in our middle schools. Hard-to-move desks were replaced with tables and chairs on casters, like the ones you see in the picture. Teachers and students have the flexibility to quickly turn a classroom into whatever setup they need to fit the learning activity for that day. In a moment, you'll hear from a couple of our teachers here in the Menner schools, two of our elementary teachers, who will explain to you why this is so important and why this makes a difference. In our elementary schools, we've also started to redesign our learning spaces. Over five years ago, we created a Catalyst program as part of our elementary school program. Through this program, we've had 25 teachers who have gone through and have had an opportunity to research different ways of teaching. For example, a teacher may research how to incorporate virtual reality to teach a lesson in a classroom. One of our teachers used VR to show students the Grand Canyon to learn about landforms. Catalyst allows teachers to experiment with these new instructional methods, but it also allows them to experiment with space. So before they need to make decisions about what furniture they would like to put in their learning spaces, they have opportunities to use those and experiment with them through the Catalyst program. And here are some of the pictures of some of our older, non-renovated classrooms into some of the newer renovated spaces at our elementary classrooms. And finally, Paradigm. We took what was once a patch of grass and turned it into a professional learning center, where our staff, students, and community can assemble for whatever purpose to learn and grow together. No longer are we limited to professional learning spaces that once could only accommodate 25 to 30. Rather, now, we have the flexibility to hold PD that can accommodate almost any variation of staff. We have heard from many of our teachers that they appreciate the opportunity to come into a professional environment where they are not seated in student desks, rather a professional atmosphere where they can learn together. This type of environment is also more conducive for community meetings, such as this meeting tonight, which allows for more space and the use of technology in a comfortable setting. This space has been used by so many, including all of our staff certified and classified, school clubs and affiliations such as the Red Line Club, Science Olympiad, Model UN, and PTAs, and the list goes on. Also taking advantage of this space are other school districts such as Kirtland, Euclid, Willoughby, Eastlake, Willoughby-Eastlake, Fairport Harbor, and many more. Our state support team is a frequent user of this space to offer professional learning to members of school districts across northeastern Ohio. The city of Menner and our business partners have also found many great uses of Paradigm. Daily, there are combinations of school personnel, community, other school districts, parent groups, and local businesses taking advantage of this amazing space. I would now like to invite up Ms. Lori Epler and Ms. Charlene Lorick to share their experiences and thoughts around how space impacts their teaching and their students' learning. These are two of our former Catalyst teachers who are presently fourth-grade teachers at Sterling Morton.
My classroom has changed drastically over the years, just my experience with Catalyst. You can see right here in my classroom, it kind of looks like a mess, but I can guarantee every one of my kids are engaged all the time in my classroom. They have choice, they can work creatively together, my behavior problems are virtually nonexistent, and it's just been an exciting atmosphere for my kids to be creative and learn together.
Charlene and I have worked together, we've both taught for quite a while, but we have worked together. She was able to experience the Catalyst two years ago, two academic years ago. She came back by the second day. I knew it was something I wanted to do because she was already on fire after two days. So I was honored enough to be allowed to have that opportunity, but more so, I think, our students were provided an amazing opportunity, and not just the students that we had that year that we were at Catalyst, every group of students that we have from this point on. It's more than just new furniture. It's about empowering our students. And we both noticed it, the Catalyst space, but also now that we've brought that back to our own learning spaces, that we are no longer teachers. I don't feel I can call myself anymore a teacher as much as I am a guide and a coach. It's no longer teacher and learner. It's a learning space filled with learners, both old and young, who, our students are so empowered. If you look at the space, you know, they're sitting at tables, they're high tops if they want to stand, they can be sitting on the couch or sitting at the carpet. They have clickboards, they have their Chromebooks. When they want to learn something or have been charged with learning something, they learn that the way that works best for them. They find the learning space that works for them, they find the resources, and our task is to provide those resources, to provide those opportunities for them to learn, because we know we're preparing them for careers that we don't even know exist, and they don't exist at this point. So we take that responsibility very seriously, and our students, we were talking today, yesterday it was, how we, you release the control, and it's a terrifying thing to do as a teacher with 30-plus years' experience, to just go, okay. But you release that control, and you see the amazing power of what happens. And once you've done that, you can't go back.
And it enables me to work in small groups. It enables me to pull my kids who differentiate so much in my classroom like that, and I think that's what's been another really exciting thing for me also to do.
Very positive parent feedback, too. Parents are excited because their children are excited about learning and coming home and sharing with them, Mom, did you know? Mom, did you know? And so we get really positive parent feedback, too, so.
And I had, oh, go. I had a sub in my room the other day, and she, and I've had several already, and they go, your classroom just runs itself. And I think that was exciting for me to hear also, because I can be gone, and it's still going, and I'm still providing, and they're providing, the kids are providing for me also. We're all learning together. And that was a huge compliment to get that from a sub the other day in my classroom.
So we thank you all.
Perfect. So what we would like to do next is show a short little video. Being part of the League of Innovative Schools, we were challenged this past fall to submit a film for a film festival for the league. There were over 30 entrants. They chose 12 of the films to show at this fall's League of Innovative Schools Conference. Ours was one of the 12 chosen. So with the wonderful work of Ms. Rakowski and Ms. Kirby, we present to you our film on space and balanced learning.
Got it? All right, go to work.
Our work in mentor schools centers around providing a well-rounded, high-quality education for students in a safe learning environment.
Good job, you guys.
We call it balanced learning.
And that balanced approach involves three components, which are space, technology, and the pedagogy, or a teacher learning that goes into using that space and that technology. The piece that I think often gets neglected from schools is the space piece. It's hard to have spaces that can be collaborative and provide opportunities for kids to be creative if you don't give them the proper space and furniture in a classroom for that to happen.
In this video, we are going to focus on that key component of learning space. In Menner, long gone is the look of the traditional classroom, where children are lined up in desks in rows.
So, did anybody know Crete was an island?
To better serve the needs of today's high-tech learners, we've essentially eliminated the front of the classroom, so the space is more flexible and teachers can be more mobile.
The flexible seating is wonderful because it allows me to move the students where I need them. I can regroup them as I need it, I can move them on the fly, which I do almost every day. I can group by ability, I can group by interest, I can group them by differentiation for different levels. It really has been a blessing.
We started this practice of revamping classrooms at our middle schools, and next came the high school. Thanks to the Straight A Fund grant, we were able to pay attention to almost every space there, from classrooms to old-fashioned lecture halls. Even the cafeteria got a facelift to include collaborative spaces. And at the center of it all is the hub, Mentor High School's high-tech media center.
Okay, you ready rock stars? Math mathematicians?
Now, at our elementary schools, some teachers are teaming up and opening their spaces into one large classroom so they can work together to reach each child.
Collaboration is a big thing, and I think the students benefit from having three teachers instead of one. We individualize by grouping the kids together, and then we work one-on-one with the students.
All of our friends are in here, and I like the three teachers and how we all work together. And it's fun to have three different rooms in one whole open space.
Along with the assigned classroom teachers, students, like Ava, benefit when other educators come into the classroom as well, such as intervention specialists, classroom assistants, gifted teachers, and more.
Believe it or not, we have 75 kids, but we probably work at about six kids at a time to get the individual learning because of the size and because of the amount of teachers we have at one time.
This model of team teaching works in self-contained classrooms, too. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach in Menner schools.
Everything that we do is to provide them a rich experience and a differentiated experience. It might look one way one year and a completely different way the next year, but the opportunity is that the kids have been exposed to those different environments throughout their time here in the Menner schools.
Because ultimately, we're trying to help prepare our students for life after Menner schools, which could look like this, or this, or this, or a number of different ways. Our hope is the balanced learning experience our students receive here sets them on the path for success in life's next journey.
So this concludes our presentation on space, but would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
My hunch is that it doesn't take long for teachers, whatever their discipline that they teach, or whatever their years in the classroom, that because it's such a natural attraction for kids, when they're happier, your job is always more productive and easier. So I think that's basically what you guys had to say.
I agree completely. Great question.
I think it's more affirmation comments. When I went last year, I think, I don't remember which school it was, but I expected total chaos, because that's not what you're used to. And it was a second grade class with the new furniture, and they were learning persuasive arguments in second grade. And a darling little girl was teaching me and telling me why I should choose this color over this color, and she's got the chairs, and she's bopping back and forth and bopping back and forth, but she had me totally engaged the whole time. And normally, back in the day, especially like in Mr. Goransky's area, you probably got a hit with a ruler, wouldn't you, if you were bopping in your chair like that? It was, she was totally engaged, and that energy was into her learning rather than getting hit with a ruler or something like that. It was wonderful to see.
And could you talk a little bit about, I know when the hub was first designed, because that was one of the places that the new furniture first appeared, and some of those soft surfaces or very pale desktops and so on, there was concern that students wouldn't treat those beautiful new pieces respectfully and that it would look terrible in a short time. But that wasn't what happened.
No, it's not, Jenny. I mean, and I appreciate that opportunity even speak on that, is that, you know, the furniture that we have purchased, we have a pretty nice guarantee on that furniture, that if anything is damaged, it's simply a photograph and me sending it to the company and a replacement piece that comes. And, you know, to be honest, it has been very far and few between that we've had damaged furniture. We have seen our kids rise up. I think if you give kids that nicer furniture, I think they see the amount of time, the amount of energy, the amount of cost that has gone into some of our, most of our redesigned spaces. Our kids have risen up to that. We just do not have the damaged furniture that I think, you know, we had before, you know, from the etching in the desks and that type of thing. Those types of things, just, they're not happening. So I give, you know, the 99% of our students, we won't let 1%, you know, change, but the 99% of our students who have really risen up and have shown great respect. And, you know, on the same parallel, that has happened with our MacBooks at the high school as well. The way that overall our kids have taken care of those devices has been very impressive. As we move into the fourth year and how they have held up and how the battery lives have held up, we have been very impressed by our student body and how they have risen to the level, to the materials that have, they have been provided.
What about course offerings, Mike? Do you find that we have a lot of opportunity for different course offerings because of the blended learning, because of the ability to have kids in the hub three days a week and then with a teacher two days a week?
We have certainly, over the last four years, been able to expand that. A lot of the purpose of the grant was to try to bring back some of those course offerings that had to be taken away during some of our financial crises that we've had. So that was certainly a goal, and by bringing back not just some of the online courses that we use through Pearson, but over the last three years, we have also been working with our own teachers to create their own online courses. That's actually the model that we believe in, because we think our teachers, our own teachers can do it better. And so, and then they can also make one-to-one contact with the students. And so we're even, Mr. Crowe, Mr. Luciano, and myself have a meeting set up for tomorrow to be meeting to choose our next round of online courses that we'll start creating in January, and they will be ready for the semester starting 1920, second semester, 1920, that next round. And we even hope to offer some elective courses in there as well.
One of the things I like most is, you know, it is a bit of a brave new world, and not everything is 100% known when you make choices about how to move forward. I love the fact that all of the leadership in collaboration with teachers is always looking to refine, tweaking where it's not working as well as you'd hoped, or something needs to be adjusted. And you also have some kids whose learning styles may vary in a dramatic way that need a different delivery system. And I like the fact that there is, it's always about best practice and change and evolution to make sure that everybody's partnering. It's not just, well, this is what we're doing now.
Right. And Jenny, I think that's why we like the word "balance" so much, is because it's finding that right balance, is that we know that there are traditional methods of teaching that still work for kids, and we don't want to just throw those out. We want to make sure that we're still using. There's a great time for a teacher to stand up in front of a class and deliver a lecture that every kid is going to remember for the next 20 years. We don't want them to stop doing that, but is that the only way that that child should be learning? And the answer is no. Because if that's the only way we're teaching them, we're not preparing them for what lies beyond. You know, focusing in on those four Cs, giving kids opportunities to collaborate with each other, collaborate with their teacher, to be critical thinkers, to be creative in their learning, and really have an opportunity to communicate what they have learned is so important. And that's something that we're trying to stress as we continue to make these changes to our spaces.
I think there's also a big tip of the hat to our IT department, because the pressure to make sure that the technology works as seamlessly as possible, it's not a simple matter. All of us have been there, you know?
Yeah, that model where we talk about instructional practice and technology and space, if any one of those fail, we feel like we're going to fail our students. And so that technology piece is critical, and our network, very rarely does our network cause us problems, so.
You did a nice presentation earlier in the year for the PTA presidents regarding digital citizenship, and I know that's an anxiety point we all share, because the digital citizenship, and I know that's an anxiety point we all share, because the world is a complex place, the internet is crazy. It's full of wonderful things, but it's also full of hazards. And for students, can you talk a little bit about how we help?
Sure. So, this year is our first year of K-12. We have implemented a K-12 digital citizenship curriculum. So, at every grade level, there are five lessons being taught around digital citizenship. Some of the things that you just mentioned, from internet safety to cyberbullying, but also, you know, it's a lot of not saying, "Don't, don't, don't." On the opposite side, it's saying "do," which is, how do we help our kids understand that they need to build a digital footprint? So many times when kids leave high school and they go on to college, colleges are going to be searching kids' names, and they're not looking for the bad things they're doing, they're looking for the good things and how you've gotten your name out there in a positive way. If you go to a job, they want to see, how have you, what have you been tweeting about? You know, what have you put on Twitter? What clubs are you involved at? So, we also want to talk about the positive side the technology can bring and that positive digital footprint. And so, at every grade level, there is an emphasis of these five lessons that are being taught. The high school just completed a digital citizenship week where the kids were introduced to those topics, but those, we hope to have those continue to go on as be points of conversation throughout high school lessons, as they come up and the teacher sees that there's an appropriate spot to bring it up, to revisit that throughout the year. And those lessons are also happening in all of our elementary schools and middle schools as well.
You know, we had a speaker last month, a parent who was concerned because her child was in that big center that Mrs. Kelly was showing. And, you know, if that's something that you're familiar with, it looks like an exciting space. And I know she had some concerns, and I think, Mr. Porter, did you and the principals meet with her?
I did, we did.
Yeah. So that she could, because all of us only want the best for our kids.
Absolutely.
And we'll go to the mat for that.
Yeah.
And so, when, when you see something that's unfamiliar, it looks sometimes like not at all what you expected, it helps to have that conversation.
You know, our, our teachers are the ones who are asking us to take down the walls and have more opportunities to collaborate with each other. We are no longer in a time where we go into a classroom and we close the door behind us and we sit with our 25 students. It's how can we do this as a team? And so many of our teachers, especially at the elementary level, are asking, so hey, how can we remove these walls, or how can I get to work with another teacher? And so, you know, these two would love to be able to sit and work together. They work together by crossing the hall, but, you know, those are things that our teachers are asking us for. And to be honest, I think that's what our business partners, our community members, our business partners are asking us for as well, is to teach kids how to be collaborative in nature, how to be able to effectively communicate with each other. So, if our teachers are leading the way in that, then we're getting closer and closer to having our students be successful with that as well.
I had two comments. Thank you, ladies, for coming and giving us an update and sharing your experience. It was so good to see. I know we were enlightened in the beginning when this process was starting, and I'm glad to see that it is still doing very well. We've gotten some updates along the way, so I appreciate you coming and sharing your experience with us. First, I wanted to mention, my grandson was first introduced to this last year in second grade at Brentmore, and right off the bat, he just flew with it, and it was evident in his grades that this was working really well for him. So, wanted to mention that. But also, the board attended our state school board conference recently, and one of the sessions that I participated in was surrounding a school district in Ohio who is just on the cusp of starting something like this. And the teachers were talking about how there's a shift in teaching, and they were right on board with it. So, this is not something that we're just doing here in Mentor. They were talking about how teaching is shifting, and it's no longer the standing in front of the classroom and lecturing. It's much more collaboration and this, this type of learning. And like I said, they're into it, the first year, they've partnered with the University of Dayton, so it's down in the southwestern corner of the state. And I encourage them to contact us to see what we've been doing.
Absolutely. We love having visitors here at the Mentor Schools.
It's interesting to see another district so far away, just starting out the process.
Absolutely. I love, in comments, your, your comments, I love Lori's statement that she makes, and I've heard her say it before, is that she no longer sees herself as a teacher. And we value, I mean, that, that name, "teacher," is, it's all near and dear to our hearts, but it is, our role is changing. We're facilitators, we're really guiding our students, we're the coaches. It doesn't mean that teacher holds any less importance. If anything, it holds more. We have to be the ones that organize that classroom in the way to provide an experience that is so rich for our students that they can grow and learn on their own. And I think that's what these two ladies have done, as well as so many of our teachers in our district.
I loved hearing that the behavior issues have been cut down. I never would expect it that that would have come out of this. That's wonderful.
Engaged students. You walk into any classroom, that's the first thing I'm looking at. How many students are actually engaged? What are the activities they're engaged with? Because if they're not engaged, they don't have a chance of learning. A lot of times when we're, as the educator, standing up in front and delivering, it's a quiet classroom, but are they really actively engaged in that process, or are they just kind of blankly staring off? You walk into these ladies' classrooms, you see 100% student engagement almost every single time I walk in there.
That's wonderful.
Mike, are we doing anything about tracking the level of engagement and correlating it with student achievement? I mean, just the fact that, a long time ago, when I was in the classroom, I remember my greatest frustration was not being able to get to those kids that weren't getting it.
Right.
And this model, just, you can get to those kids.
You can get to those kids, you're right. Because it allows you, it frees you up to have kids, other kids actively engaged, so that you can really give that student one-to-one. You know, can to answer your question directly, though, we did, with our work with Junon and Andrew McKecon, who were our grant evaluators for the last five years, we've actually just finished writing over a 30-page paper about our five years of the grant. And a big piece of that data looked at student engagement over those five years, and that looked at not only talking with teachers, but also looking at walkthrough data and that type of thing, of walking into a class, how many students are actively engaged. And we have seen huge increases in student engagement with regards to that type of classroom. With regards to, you know, it's hard, I think, as us being on the forefront, but as we, as you look at like standardized, standardized tests and look at our state tests, if you look at over the last two years, we have had 31 of our 42, each year, we have 21 areas. Over the last two years, 31 of those 42 areas has grown. And so, while we're attacking this area of working with teachers and having them make some major shifts in instruction and trying to focus in on those four Cs, it's not like we're forgetting about that academic piece. We're trying to work on both. We want to see this stay as high as ever for our school district, but it's also trying to focus in on that, it's not just about the tests. We also have to make sure that we're preparing them to be effective communicators, to be able to collaborate with each other, you know, to be able to be critical thinkers. And so, we're trying to make sure that we're doing both. And right now, the data is showing us that we're accomplishing not only the higher level of engagement, but at the same time, our standardized tests are going up as well.
Sounds like a lar, an article for a professional journal.
You know, it always, it looks like something important is happening. You know, that's, that's the piece of it, too. When a classroom looks tired and shabby, it's the community saying it doesn't really matter.
Right.
But, you know, when you, especially in this professional development building, it elevates the work and the vision in an important way.
My wife works for a company that's based out of California. Many of those startup companies, what do they do to try to attract employees or try to keep employees? They provide spaces for their employees that make them want to be there. I don't, I don't minimize that. I think as a district, we always have a lot of people who want to teach in our district, and I think it's for many reasons that they want to come to our district. But I won't, I won't minimize that the space that we are providing them to teach in, the space where they can have professional learning opportunities. I will put bar bonus in our professional learning opportunities that we offer our staff against anyone in this country. There are no, there's no better place than the professional learning opportunities that we provide our teachers than here in the Mentor Schools. I'll put it up against anyone. And so, by doing that, I think we attract and we keep our employees here. So, I think you guys have all made, I mean, you guys could have given this presentation tonight, so I appreciate all of your comments and support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may be so bold, as teachers representing teachers, these wonderful opportunities, these things cannot happen without an incredibly supportive Board of Education, an incredibly supportive higher-level administration, and incredibly supportive building administrators, because it's taking a risk when you try these things. And sometimes, things don't go as well as you anticipated and hoped, and you tweak and you polish. So, as teachers, we thank you and all of our administrators for allowing these wonderful opportunities for our students and for ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Background, so, I mean, Mike, every day was so, you can do, you know, it was just so positive. It was a great positive experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, Mrs. Upler, Mrs. Lorick, for an outstanding presentation and ensuing discussion that followed. And I, too, would not have believed the power of space and even furniture if I hadn't, you know, experienced it firsthand and seen it with my own eyes these last several years. So, the power is significant. So, thank, thank you for that presentation. Madam President and members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Crowe to the podium to recognize Mr. Casella, who earned one of the highest honors from the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Porter. Mentor Schools has a long tradition of excellence, both in and out of the classroom. It is with great pleasure, I am here tonight to recognize one of our own for excellence in their field. Would Jeff Casella please join me at the podium? This year, Jeff Casella has been awarded the Athletic Director of the Year for the State of Ohio by the Ohio Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. Some background on Jeff. Jeff is a longtime Lake County resident, graduating from Perry High School. I'm not going to say the year. Jeff continued his education at Bowling Green State University and earned his Bachelor's of Education degree. He then went on to obtain a master's degree in exercise science and administrative certificate from Cleveland State University. Jeff began working in this district in 1991 as a health and PE teacher, and was immediately involved in our athletics as an athletic trainer at Mentor High School. Then in 2007, Jeff became the athletic director and has been in this position, has been in this role ever since. Under Jeff's leadership, the Mentor Athletics Department has done extremely well on and off the field. Our athletic teams have won several conference, district, and regional titles. We have competed at the highest level, qualifying for the state competitions and winning, including in, including the state championship in boys' basketball in 2013, state runner-up titles in football in 2012 and 2017, a state runner-up titles in gymnastics in 2012, 2014, and 2015, state runner-up titles in girls' bowling in 2015, and a state runner-up title in boys' soccer in 2015. Now, Jeff is no stranger to accolades. In 2006, he received the Athletic Trainer of the Year Award from the Ohio Athletic Trainers Association. In 2009, he was, he was awarded the Tim Flannery Horizon Award, and then in 2017, he, he received the Meritorious, Meritorious, I've been working on that one all day, Service Award. Getting to work with Jeff now for numerous years and being a student athlete here, I can attest to the commitment Jeff has in helping our students and coaches achieve their dreams. Jeff is an advocate for athletics and our students. Coach Casella, congratulations on being recognized as the AD of the Year in the State of Ohio. Congratulations. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter, you know, recognition like this doesn't happen in a vacuum, so obviously, a few thank yous. First of all, to you guys and your support of athletics and my program and myself professionally and all the things that you've allowed me to do and grow as a, as a professional. So, for that, I thank you, and the athletes of Mentor High School, thank you, because I say it all the time, that, that without a supportive administrative team and a school board that believes truly in the, in the, in athletics, it's really hard to do. To Mr. Crowe and the administrative staff here at the high school, and my coaching staff, again, I think, I say it all the time, I believe we have one of the best coaching staffs in the state of Ohio, and our coaches go way above and beyond, the hours and the time, you know, I just come off, we come off a great football season and, and our fall sports season, and I think about the hours and time that our coaches put in for our student athletes, and for that, I'm appreciative. And also, obviously, for my wife, Linnell, who's here tonight, and my daughters, my rocks. So, like, I can't do it without them. So, thank you very much for, for the recognition, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. I love you, too.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, and congratulations again, Mr. Casella. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Policies 8.02.1, 8.16, and 9.21.
Before I move, I just want to talk a little bit about the process that the board went through when we were developing our resource fund policy. It grew out of our boardwork session way back on June 2nd, and it was driven by the strategic plan goal, maintain and enhance fiscal stability by focusing attention on short and long-term financial planning. We then had discussions with Mr. Wilson and asked him to research best practices, and also, throughout the process, asked him to determine percentages to set aside based on costs for instructional days. Throughout July, August, September, information was provided to the board in weekly updates, and we had opportunities to raise issues and ask questions. We've had open discussions at earlier board meetings. One board meeting, we even wordsmithed. We then took the policy, or asked that Mr. Wilson take the policy to the Citizens Financial Committee, and they made recommendations and some changes, and then have recommended that we move to adopt this. So, it's been a long process, but a process that was based on work, and I think it's another example of how this board is taking the responsibility of being fiscally responsible for the community. So, with that, I move that the three policies be adopted.
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C-1, related to certified personnel, and C-2 through C-6, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Board of Education, report and recommendations, any business?
So, we have the, I don't think that's in this section, that comes the chief financial, so nothing here.
No business. And we have no legislative report. Chief Financial Officers Report and Recommendations.
So, we have before us the approval of the aggregate of Section 8, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Anything else under Chief Financial Officers Report?
No, I could read the substantial document, Mr. Wilson, page by page, and we'd be here past dinnertime on Thursday, but he's delightfully thorough, so I believe that's it.
That completes his report. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
Was that the approval through G? I'm sorry.
Did we go A through G?
Yes, it was, I believe.
Thank you for clarifying.
No, only through F, I'm sorry.
Oh, shall we do G?
So, G.
Payment of invoices.
Let me add that to this.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jesslyn?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
I have nothing.
No?
Nope.
Any new business? Any new business?
And?
No?
No new business?
Nope. Hearing of the public on any item, including agenda items. None? Okay. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session regarding compensation of public employees. We do not expect a vote.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jesslyn is yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening and a happy holiday.